Thirteenth, here for our weekly board supervisor meeting, can I get a motion to approve the agenda in a minute?
Couple of seconds.
Motion is second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried, is there any public comment this time? Seeing none, moving on to the claims, can I get a motion to approve the claims?
I move second.
Motion is second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Uh payroll.
Uh we have a P A F for a new hire for Sheriff's clerical position, that was her six month step, that'll be a resolution.
I'd move resolution twenty twenty-one number forty-nine on the new hire for the sheriff's department in the clerical position.
Okay, we've got a motion second to approve the resolution, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, resolution adopted.
And then I have two payroll changes, uh one is extension of a temporary position in Portview County Attorney, and then the other one is a temporary pay increase for veterans of theirs, D A.
Is there a motion approved?
I move second.
Okay, we've got a motion second to approve those. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried, any other payroll?
Nope.
Drainage?
Yes, sir, I have one drainage, uh drains is your P six to Mason Township, reported by Mike Webb, it's actually been at another county observation property, part of the Saint Paul out there, appears to be a rural child, recommend Rodney investigate.
I'd move that we send Rodney out to investigate.
I'd second.
Okay, we've got a motion second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Uh can I get a motion to pick up items four or five and six?
I'd move to approve the clerks monthly, the auditors quarterly, and the recorders quarterly, report of these as presented.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried, item number seven, is there any resolution?
I'd move resolution to approve the transfer of funds to the secondary roads, uh resolution twenty twenty-one fifty.
Second.
Is that fifty or fifty-one?
Fifty.
Okay, I thought we had a resolution for that new hire.
We did.
Okay, my bad. Motion is second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, resolution is adopted. Uh, item number eight, we've got a hearing warrant permit to review.
I would recommend the board through this on the pending condition of the pending dismissal of their insurance. We have not had the verification yet from the Iowa law clerkage division, they have a new website, so we can't plug in and see the way through a call back from them, but I Iowa law clerkage division conditions that you have to stop insurance.
I'd move to approve based on what Adam just said about getting on clarification that they have their program insurance in fairness.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion second, based on the conditions, is there any additional comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Uh, item number nine, Tom.
Yes, this was a result of a county other updated, I will take from positions to real estate assistant position update if you were used to better reflect the complexity of the job. As part of this process, the pay scale is determined not to be conducive to the skill set we need. It is a, it is even contracted position, and I had notified you as a statement of this whole changes, I did not get any feedback. So what we're proposing is a new scale takes us to the current contract year of, or the current contract period, two thirty to twenty-two, then of course the scale will be renegotiated as part of negotiations. But it's basically a better reflective technical aspect and the importance of this position within, within the contract and the pay scale. We felt it was above, but the skill set was a little bit more than what a first position may have, and therefore that's what a recommendation to improve the pay scale.
I would move to approve the salary scale for the real estate assistant position as presented by our H R.
Okay, we got a motion second to approve the salary scale, is there any additional comments?
I guess, Adam, could you just explain why this is a little more, just so everybody knows what they're from the sales as far as.
Absolutely, so the previous position was a clerk position where it was primarily involved data entry. Um this new position is the way that the process is formed now, and the way that we have utilized this position is more technical and a higher degree of processing, uh they're having to, and knowledge base and the skills and abilities that that position is actually, that position personally bring into that position. So it's not strictly data entry that the clerk level position was, this is more technical analysis and legal description and mapping skills, so it's a hybrid position. And it will not affect the request either.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Okay, it's ten oh five, we'll move to the public hearing in regards to Stockburger and change of zone, so at this time I'll open public hearing and have John fill us in as to what we're looking at.
Certainly, uh the Stockburgers requested a change of zone from A one to A two agricultural. Um this property is located eighteen three eighty-eight Orkla Ave. Um they currently own a one point nine eight acre piece, and they're adding an additional one nine nine acres for a total of two point nine eight acres. Uh, and that, it was a grandfathered piece, and uh by adding that extra land, they forego that grandfathered piece, so that triggered rezoning requirement. Uh, the plan and zoning commission met on April first, recommended approval unanimously, and uh everything there uh meets the comp plan goals and requirements. Um and the planning and zoning commission also wanted to note the non-conforming structures with the house and garage that are eight feet apart.
So at this time, if there's anybody uh in the audience or on the phone that would like to add anything to that for or against this uh change of zone, now would be the time to do it. Hearing nothing, I would entertain a motion to close this portion of the public hearing.
I'd move to close.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried, so of course, we have a resolution to approve or deny.
I would move resolution twenty twenty-one number fifty-one approving the zone change for Stockburgers presented.
All second. All right, we got a motion saying to approve resolution number fifty-one, is there any additional comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, resolution adopted. Uh moving on to, I'm gonna bounce down to thirteen, should be you Ken.
Okay, um the uh, so we've got a few contractors for you, C L T O M is basically the ones adhering to a three-year commitment, um they are essentially more than doubling our speeds at the courthouse and increasing it at the L E C, there's no cost change at the L E C, there's actually about almost fifty-five hundred, at least a fifty-five hundred savings at the courthouse, they're eliminating long distance, they're increasing some other fees, but overall it's, it's quite, uh it's quite compelling in terms of savings. I would recommend that we sign both of these agreements, um just in terms of, from a saving standpoint and a performance standpoint, it's beneficial to the county.
Is there a motion approved?
I'd move to approve.
Okay, motion is second, is there any discussion?
Just a, go ahead, Chris, I'm sorry. Just a question, thanks, especially looking out for those cost-saving measures for the taxpayers, Mr. Gold, um will Brandon be able to tap into this same contract being next door to the L E C?
Um I will be charging him five thousand a year, so he can.
So I was wondering as far as approving this contract if.
He, he will, he will actually piggyback, that same, same as, in actuality, he's gonna be unrelated to this, he'll be losing two telephone lines, actually three, um but he won't be paying for anymore, so that's actually not reflected in here, but those, he'll, he'll actually be using the same infrastructure, so.
Good.
Can I answer all my questions? Thank you.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, moving on, it is ten ten, so I'm gonna bounce back to John again in regards to the change of zone for Clemens, John.
Certainly.
I'm also gonna open up the public portion of this hearing, and then we'll go into any additional comments after John's finished.
Certainly, uh John and Dennis Clemens are also applying for change of zone from A one to A two agricultural. Um, the property was originally split in nineteen ninety-six, the tax parcel was triggered at that time, uh without a proper rezoning, uh since it was below ten acres. Uh this will rectify the status of the properties who are able to issue building permits for the property. Um, planning and zoning commission again met on April first, unanimous approval, or recommended approval unanimously, uh meets our comprehensive plan goals and policies, and uh there are no non-conforming structures on the property.
Very good, if uh there's anybody in the audience or on the phone that would like to speak uh in regards to the change of zone for Clemens, uh now would be the time to do it. Hearing none, I would approve, I would entertain a motion to close this portion of the public hearing.
So I would move to close the public portion.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so we need to uh take up our next resolution.
I would move resolution twenty twenty-one fifty-two to, to approve.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and second to approve resolution number fifty-two, any discussion?
I like, question I would have, so I mean, I'm, I'm fine with it, John, I was just curious, I mean, so how's stuff like this get overlooked back then?
Um there was a series of when we first adopted our zoning ordinance, I think there was some lack of understanding of what that meant. Um so there's properties that at that time, uh that got split without that knowledge, and they got discovered later. Um, and so there's a few that we would quote, call an illegal lot as a result, so over time we get some of these fixed.
Cause it seems like there's been quite a few over the last few years, hasn't there been?
Yeah, they, they trickle in every once in a while.
Yeah, I'm Dennis Clemens.
Yeah.
I'd like to respond to that too.
Yeah.
Um, the property was originally purchased from the Bertha Stones Foundation back in nineteen eighty, and it was split from the, uh, homestead, it's split from the farmstead, so that was when we actually purchased it, but at that time, it was not changed to the correct zoning at that time.
Okay. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
Thank you.
Uh, why don't you finish up, Ken, if you can?
Sure, um okay, so the, the second one is, well, we, we currently, we use an off-site backup, it's, it's for uh disaster recovery type of situations where it's something here plus some, some other protections, just best practice to have some off-site uh location for backups. We currently use a vendor that gives us nine, nine terabytes of, um, of storage, uh found a different vendor that will actually provide about thirty-one hundred dollars in savings a year, plus give us twenty-five terabytes of savings, um, I recommend going with them, it's a, it is a three-year commitment, they do have some opt-outs in year, uh month thirteen and twenty-four, but it's a, again, it's fairly compelling, uh you know, uh proposal for us in terms of, for the county, so. Uh any questions on that?
I was just gonna say, didn't we just do a different backup?
We did a, a backup solution on s, on site, it was like on premise, so that, that was, that is correct, we did something to, basically, we, um, for giving us some protections, it's, it's encrypted and protected in case, basically for ransomware and things like that. Um this is actually off-site, so it's in a different location, so it's, it's, uh helping us with another scenario of, of situation that may occur, so.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'd motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried, thanks Ken. Uh moving on to the uh, the ten fifteen public hearing, uh, change of zone for Cerro Gordo County, so I'll open up the portion of this hearing now, John, if you'll fill us in.
Certainly, so this site is for a potential new engineer shed, um to replace uh ones that the counties give, give or selling in Clear Lake, to more efficiently serve uh secondary road services in the northwest part of the county, south of Clear Lake. Um we, the request of the engineer's office to rezone from A one to A two for the purpose of making a government facility permitted use. Uh, planning and zoning commission met again on April first, they did recommend unanimous approval, and that recommendation was based on uh that uh Brandon had talked with neighbors and received no concerns or comments, and also uh that their, uh, excuse me, uh the balance of like doing a cost benefit analysis for that location, uh save money over time, Brandon has done some analysis, he would be able to better fill you in on that. And also, there's also plans to do vegetative buffers along the east property line for the residential properties to the east, and as well as do uh different style of building, like a sticks, stick-built style, uh better blend in with the nearby residential. If you have anything to add, Brandon, feel free.
Well, the, the salt shed will be a, a wooden style one, it'd be, you know, pressure treated lumber, and they last, you know, they still last fifty years, it might be slightly more expensive than the hoop style, but it will blend into the neighborhood better, and I think it would just be more well-received when you do, for residents nearby. And it's really not a huge cost difference, it's only just a little more expensive, but it could probably weather better than a hoop shed does in the long run, so I mean, it's, it's kinda half a little more to compare the two that are about the same, it's a different concept. Um, yeah, I guess that's the biggest thing about it, no neighbors had any problems, the uh, the line donor that we have to extend the water line in front of his properties, is gonna share in the cost of that, so we don't have any, any barriers to get to the utilities.
And additionally, uh, I haven't, the office hasn't received any additional comments from the public, we also offered the city of Ventura the comments, since it's adjacent to the western city limits, uh they did not comment, they, Elsa said they would comment if they did have concerns, um, and, and balance uh with the goals or comprehensive plan, there's more support for a rezon, potential rezoning than I would say that, that hurts despite taking some farmland out of production.
And there's uh, the salt shed, we're also gonna cooperate with the city of Ventura, so we're gonna kinda supply them some salt in the winter time, so they can help get out of some trouble ahead with their well, so we can, I think it'd be a good, it's a good partnership over there.
Okay, is there anybody in the audience or on the phone that would like to speak in regards to this change of zone? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to close this portion of the public hearing.
So, second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, so we need to take up our adjournments.
I would move resolution two thousand twenty-one number fifty-three approving the zone change for Cerro Gordo County as presented.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. All right, Brandon, you're up, county engineer.
Okay, so uh we have started doing some of our, uh, our spring summer projects, and we started up on Yarol, and that coal mine is undermined up there, we're installing head walls that go down four feet to stop from getting washed under anymore, and we're gonna get uh, the soda growl is called pressurized under there, to fill the vault with poison and get it over, so it's stabilized, then our plan is by end of the summer to get some extensions on that, so we can take the rails off of it, it's, cause the structure itself is in great shape, so it's gonna be well worth the cost of extending it and keeping it in service. Um, along with the contract, I'd have somebody come do that cellular concrete under it, we're going to do the bridge approaches at uh, in Rock Falls, cause the bridge approaches have an awful drop in them, so we're gonna, you, you inject this stuff into the ground, it solidifies all the materials under there, so it stops eroding and sinking, so then it's when we patch it again, it'll stay smooth, and we shouldn't have any more drops there. And they're also gonna go up to the, the D twenty crossing for Lehigh, where they cross the highway there, and we're gonna stabilize the grade underneath of that, and I've talked to the asphalt association and the concrete paving association about some possible solutions, and the one I'm looking at right now is having some pre-manufactured concrete panels made that are designed to take that load, so then we'll solidify that, we'll stabilize the ground, we'll mill off enough for the panels to go in and drop those in place, and then it shouldn't be a problem in the future. So, we're working towards getting that fixed this summer as well, and we'll probably do it on both sides of that very road track, cause both sides are pretty rough. Um, we're gonna begin hauling gravel, I think they already probably started today, so we're gonna start getting out there on the road and getting that work done. Uh, we are moving towards completion on the building, they moved past a couple of hiccups that we've had, but we're, we're getting really close, I mean, all the steel and tiles are in, they're testing the furnaces out there, and a lot of the systems are, are being tested and coming online, so hopefully maybe in the future we'll have a, you know, pressure moving in maybe for ya. Um, I guess, does anyone have any other questions, Tom?
Other than testing, what else is really left?
I mean, there're, there're just a lot of electrical, we need to be finished up, there's a little bit of age back, a little bit of plumbing, it's just they're, they're tying up some stuff, the electrician has the most work left, but all the vendors have the moment.
Brendan, the first bridge you talked about.
Yep.
Is that the one that we talked about about a week ago?
No, that one's a different one, that's not, when I get the extensions ordered for that one, and order them at the same time, and hopefully save on shipping, and all we'll end up doing is we'll probably run to Crane, and they'll just go from three different sites I like to put extensions on, and just place them, we'll get all the preparation work done, and then we'll place them with the crane, and then we'll finish them all for ourselves.
Do you, just so that generally calls me down.
Yeah.
A rough idea of the time frame?
Uh, by the time they produce them, it'll probably be August.
August, okay.
Hey, while you're talking about the rails, um, we talked about it last year, but out on D twenty, uh to the east.
Yeah.
Rail crossing.
I've been trying to get, the one that's coming apart, I've been trying to get and replace the timbers on that, and they tell me they're going to, but I don't have any, it won't give me any kind of schedule.
Can you put any more pressure on it?
I, yeah, I'll just keep bugging them on this, I gotta work with them on some other stuff, so they're just gonna keep hearing from me until they replace them, cause they are, they're very rough if they're coming apart.
One, one last question, the uh, is it city or is it county, that going up twelve street over that little bridge, is that county or is that, is that?
That is the city bridge.
Okay.
Sorry, I had to, yeah, North and I A F there?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a city bridge.
Okay.
Anything else? No, move on to uh.
So the first thing I wanna talk about is uh the five-year plan, so I have a map in front of you that shows everything that's on the five-year plan, plus some purple dots that say additional projects for twenty-two and twenty-three, and what this is about is uh, we're not sure, we got one round of stimulus money that has some, some infrastructure stuff in it, that we know what we're gonna get, but we don't know the rules on it, or exactly how we can use it, and then we also are, the possibility of the next infrastructure plan giving us some money. So what we were informed is that we should probably have some money available in our, our project budget, so that you can do the, the cost share, so maybe twenty or forty-sixty split on it when we finally are able to do it, and the other thing, they're not quite sure is if they're gonna go off the eligible bridge list, or let us go based on conditions still, or what the rules are exactly. So what I've done is these purple dots are gonna get done uh either in, basically year twenty-two or twenty-three, based on what we, we ended up having. I also am talking with uh W H K S and them designing seven different structures for us that could be used as part of the, if we get some of those stimulus payments, if we get the finer rules figured out, so we'll have these four designed and ready, we'll have those seven designed and ready, and I'll be able to fit together whichever ones I can get the most bang for the buck out of.
The all bridges, bridges?
Yeah, they're all bridges, cause that's the, the thing they want is roads and bridges, but they emphasize the bridge, structure side of the roads and bridges when they give you this money. So yeah, there's seven more that are not showing on this map, because I'm not sure if I said the rules for the stimulus money, if and when we get it, but, so we'll be prepared to use it as soon as it comes, we'll have a couple of ready projects.
If those, if those other seven materialize, are we, are we set into a position where we can do those?
Yeah.
Add into the plan?
Yeah, exactly, that's what we'll do.
Okay.
So that's, that's why I, my budget, sorry, my budget's one and a half million dollars, I only have uh in the actual plan for next year, one point one million dollars, so we have four hundred thousand dollars in match money to make up for our twenty percent on any of these projects, but if that doesn't happen, I'll be able to do at least three, if not four of the purple dots based on the price of the beginning.
So adopting this five-year program, if we did, if we did that today, um, how well, how locked into that are we?
Uh the only ones that are really locked in are year one and two, and really you can add more to them, it's just you don't wanna, you just wanna, those projects that are on, you wanna do them, you do one and two, and the rest of them are just kinda your goal points, you know, where you're heading, and making sure you're working your way through your deficient bridges, this is always.
Obviously, I've shared with you before, but just like to see a little bit more aggressive, but we can't do much right now, not knowing what this stimulus is going to do, so I'd like to be able to maybe uh relook at this in a board staff with you.
Yeah, for sure, like, there could be up to eleven more bridges on this, just based on what the rules are when the, when the money actually comes in.
All right, so I guess I would move to approve, to have the chair sign the five-year program as presented.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
So the next item I have is the N O T budget, which matches my, my county budget that we've already went through the process of, of getting approved, I guess, uh. It's right in line with last year's number, more or less it's slightly less, but it's just because I wasn't quite sure where, I mean, even though they told you the COVID didn't affect it drastically, I didn't wanna overextend myself too far and plan too much money in the budget, cause we know exactly where our charts fall. Um, inside the budget, I have uh four over a million dollars of equipment, six hundred thousand dollars of it is just for the box that I've tried to purchase last year, and we have a mower tractor that fell apart last year, so a lot of it's just stuff that ongoing maintenance, the only item on there that would be uh improvement, this year would be another excavator to help us increase how many projects we can do, how many dishes we can do.
Is that coming to everyone?
No, I gotta, cash flow wise, it's probably gonna come in the fall, is what we're looking at, I wanna get past the first uh quarter of tax asking before I first decide.
Your motion to approve the budget?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried, anything else, Brandon? Moving on to John, uh resolution regards to the amended dock agreement.
Certainly, this will be a resolution, amended resolution, which will be number twenty, twenty-one sixteen A, and this would adopt an amended twenty twenty-one dock policy. The amendment adds a section for the possibility to allow for um residents in a particular subdivision where we have a public approach, where we also hold a D N R permit, where we may not have, be able to have uh um public hoists or dock hoist assignments. Um, it would allow them to file a petition that would have to be approved by, or supervisors, and then they would also have to do an annual uh dock application, similar to other public docks that would have hoists. Um in that petition, and it, in allowing them uh they could do that, uh they would also be bound by the other provisions of the dock policy, um that would include liability insurance, uh there'd be a fee for us maintaining the D N R permit, uh, they would also be responsible for the cost of operation and maintenance and operation of the dock itself. Um, so it's just preparing for that possibility if we ever have, say, a public approach that's too narrow, where that situation might occur, um, and that's in a nutshell what, what the new section would be, there's no other amendments to the policy. If you have any other questions, I'm happy to do my best to answer those.
Sounds good, is there a motion to uh put forth resolution sixteen A?
I would move to amend uh resolution twenty twenty-one sixteen A as presented on the dock assignment.
Okay, we have a motion saying to approve the resolution, is there any additional questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the resolution is adopted, are there any dock permits, John?
Uh there is no dock permits this week.
All right, uh here, Ian, Brian, you wanna give us a brief update?
Yeah, sure, thank you, uh, right now, uh we're struggling to fill vaccine slots. Yeah, sure. Thank you. Uh, right now, uh, we're struggling to fill vaccine slots. Um, we still have some open, um, and so we are just trying to figure out how we otherwise, um, kinda reassess our marketing and the availability. I think we're getting to that point now where the, the, the supply is meeting the demand. Uh, there's enough availability out there, both Mercy One, as well as we are seeing, uh, people who no show. So they schedule appointments and then they'll come get their vaccine. So, uh, it becomes a problem just trying to manage how many vaccines you might have left over at the end of the day that, uh, we need to call people in and try to not waste. Um, surge still remains concerned, so we keep an eye on that. Uh, right now, it doesn't appear to be a huge issue here locally, but, um, I think one in three, um, positive cases right now are coming out of Michigan. And so Michigan is a place to keep an eye on. Um, Illinois and Wisconsin often, uh, also provide some concern for us, so we can keep an eye on that. Uh, we're starting to talk about an exit strategy and what that looks like for us not to be providing mass vaccination clinic. Um, that would take, uh, anywhere from sixty to ninety days to do that, but it is something that we're, we're looking ahead for, uh, and toward. Uh, so that's a work in progress. And then if, if you haven't been paying attention today, Johnson &amp; Johnson came out. Uh, actually, CDC put a pause on, uh, distribution of Johnson &amp; Johnson. The, um, the advisory committee on immunization practices is meeting tomorrow, talking about, uh, there were six cases of, uh, a rare severe type of blood clot, uh, was found, and so they wanna assess that. Um, I guess from my perspective, there's millions of those doses that have been administered already to have six cases. Um, is likely in line with what you would normally see in a population. However, it's, uh, again, this, these emergency use, so it draws attention. So we're keeping an eye on that. We do, um, we do keep an eye on, uh, general information. Aside from those four points, uh, you know, it's pretty much business as usual for us. So, uh, we, the light seems to be getting a little bit brighter. We have a long way to go on the vaccination side of things, but I think that's just gonna be, we're, we're into this for a marathon, but we won't need a mass clinic to do that. Any questions for me?
I guess, you know, like, the other thing I would say, Brian, is, I think, uh, I'll just be honest, I'm not really thinking about people not showing up, people that there's open spots, or how would you suggest that we do a media blitz?
Yeah, I know, I've got a question. Yep. Yeah, we're, we're, again, Jared's here, he can help get that messaging out, trying to let people know. I mean, we're having slots that, that remain open, uh, and there's some, there's, this morning, there was sixty to, I think we're gonna post another ninety. Uh, so it, it does cause some concern that we can, we don't wanna accept more than we can distribute because it could impact our next week's allocation. And I've shared that with the Iowa Department of Public Health. But, I mean, worst-case scenario is if our next week's allocation were impacted, there's plenty of locations where people can still get vaccine. So that's positive, so we'll keep working on it.
Anything else?
So, uh, um, percentage-wise, where would you say you're at?
Um, yeah, that's a good question. We talked about that again this morning. I've seen the, some of the percentages. Let's just use sixty-five and over. Those sixty-five and over statewide have received, uh, I think the governor's talking eighty-five plus percent of people receive their first dose. Um, we're not, we're about in that range, but I would like to see the number of people getting their second dose pretty close to in line with that. And at least the data that we're seeing right now is not. Um, so I've, have asked for us to look more into that. The problem is the data's coming from the state, uh, database. And so it just doesn't seem to jive very well for me. And, and then depending on the age, ages, the numbers go down from there because they haven't been, uh, really promoted to those groups nearly as much. But I'm hoping that we, we continue to see a demand out there, so we can at least work through our eight hundred doses of Moderna. Uh, that's a consistent supply for us. Um, we hadn't really gotten hardly any Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine anyway. Um, and then Pfizer's is something that we, we've struggled with because that one has a lot more requirements for how you, uh, manage it. Ultra cold hold for long-term. It can be held in a regular freezer for, uh, two weeks. But, um, anyway, so, so that one is a struggle. But I don't, the, the total numbers, depending on the age categories, is, is, I think, there's still a lot of work to be done.
So there's a lot of them that haven't showed up for their second shot?
There's, there's a lot of people who are, you know, choosing not to get it. Um, but there's also a lot of people who are no-shows. Um, people who will schedule it and then not show up to get their vaccine. And so they're likely getting it from one of the other pharmacies, one of the other locations. Uh, we're also starting to see some people, we're gonna see kids coming back from college. We're gonna see, also, we're seeing snowbirds show back up in the Midwest who maybe need their second dose. Originally, we were saying, sorry, we can't administer those, but we are starting to do that for people. Obviously, they're gonna have to get it from somewhere. But usually boost doses that we have in stock are saved basically for somebody who got their prime dose here. We think supply is gonna be enough. We'll be able to administer those doses.
Part of the reason I asked, the original question was, how long do you think, I mean, you'll be out of the south side at home?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think it's gonna be all that much longer. Um, again, if, if we're not filling up spots, then we'll continue to focus on distribution rather than, than actually giving vaccines. And that's been our goal all along, is we wanna do a mass push, get people vaccinated, then we can step away and let our partners kinda do some of that work. A lot of our partners are billing, uh, insurances for that, so they're incentivized to do that. Public health has never been set up really to be able to do that. There are a few agencies across the state that have tried it. But, so, um, I mean, it's, it's sixty, ninety days, maybe. It's hard to tell. And we still need to work, reach out to our underserved populations, so we're focusing on, uh, reaching out to some of our minority groups, non-English speaking groups, and try to get them in the door.
And we're outside of our contract elsewhere on a month-to-month basis, is that right?
Yeah.
That's correct.
And they're fine with that.
Yeah, I understand.
You good?
I move to adjourn.
Second.